And first thing, would you all please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have two presentations, one DTE Energy Retrocommissioning Final Report. I wonder if our mayor will spend you there?
I think John is.
Oh, here he comes, out of the darkness.
Yes, sir.
Sir, counsel. With cities always, it seems, doing more with less, losing resources, facing increased costs, I'm pleased to announce we've sort of pushed that back a little bit tonight, at least temporarily. This is the DTE Retrocommissioning Pilot Program Report, council approved participation in 2015. In this program, DTE provides engineering expertise to identify ways to save energy on our heating, ventilation, and air conditioning system, HVAC. In return, what the city had to do was to agree to invest a certain amount of funds based on energy-saving methods that would be paid back within 18 months. Council agreed to invest $40,000 in this endeavor. I'm pleased to report, first of all, that we only spent a little under $13,000. All of the changes were identified as energy-saving. Not only that, but more importantly, this $13,000 investment is going to result in an estimated $154,000 energy savings every year going forward. So basically, what that means is, we conducted the changes, the improvements, they paid for themselves in about 32 days, and then every single month thereafter, we're going to save an additional $12,000. The other nice thing is that we actually improved comfort by doing this in many buildings. For instance, the library, the third floor, was always too warm or too hot, depending on the season. One of the things we found was a large ventilation air return that was closed, should have been open all along. Just by opening that, we've improved the situation and reduced our cost. Also want to stress that this is not just money-saving, obviously, it's less energy we're consuming, and less greenhouse gases we're emitting. The equivalent of greenhouse gases that we've reduced would be about the same as burning 600 tons of coal every year. So, that's considerable, we can all breathe easier there. I also want to stress that these are not pie-in-the-sky estimates. This is DTE, they hire one engineering firm to make the changes, the recommendations, they hire another engineering firm to audit them, to make sure that's accurate. In our case, because our Civic Center complex was such a large project, we were actually audited twice. The general consensus was that, if anything, our figures are probably a little low on what we're going to save. Also, we are currently nominated for a 2017 Governor's Energy Excellence Award as a result of the Civic Center because of the incredible savings that we implemented with such minor investment. Just to let you know, this is not our only energy-saving grants that we're taking part in. As you leave, if you look at City Hall, you'll see it looks a lot better than it used to. We've replaced the old metal halide lights with LED lights, they look a lot better, the flagpoles look a lot better, they also save energy. 10% of that came from a DTE grant. We're also looking at a larger grant for around the library right now. So we're taking advantage of as many grants as we can to save the energy, reduce our carbon footprint. Just wanted to give counsel that final report.
Who does the work? DTE has the engineer, then another, oops. DTE does the, or they have an engineer, then they bring another company in to do the auditing. Who does the work?
Well, the way it worked is, DTE brings in EDSS, which is an engineering firm that specializes in energy use. And then it's our HVAC contractors and employees who actually carried out the work. So most of the work was done by Temperature Services, EDSS gave them a great thumbs up as far as, well, a good partner to work with. So we actually made the changes ourselves.
Okay, they tell us what we should be doing, we go ahead and do it, and then an auditor, an auditing firm comes in and does the audit to make sure that we're saving what DTE's engineers-
And that we actually implemented what was recommended, just to make sure that we didn't, well, maybe we don't want to do that right now. So, that's how that worked. And actually, every recommendation, we reviewed within facility maintenance, and they all made perfect sense.
Okay. All right. Mr. Manalbaum.
Just out of curiosity, looking at the numbers of savings, when it's by building or area, Parks and Rec and the courthouse seem to stand out compared to the rest of the areas that were looked at. Was there something specific that was found?
A big part of the timing had to do with, or a big part of the savings had to do with the timing of when we were cooling and when we were heating, as far as time of day and day of the week. In fact, I found that in a 1979 energy audit of the city, that was recommended as well. But this time, we actually did it. And, for instance, the court, unlike this building, which is open frequently at night, and made it difficult for us to dial it down as sternly or as aggressively as we would like to, the court, they closed right on time. That was a huge savings. And to some degree, the recreation, although that was not quite as much a factor there.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else?
Mr. President, I'd like to thank Deputy McReena for his leadership that he's providing on this. This is a continuation of the 2010 energy block grant items we started, the city's transit plan was part of it. And all of this, the message to our residents, and I think even to our corporate community, we were the first community to adopt the PACE legislation. We can, working together, move forward on these energy management. Last week, we signed the city's resolution in agreeing to the conceptual goals of the Paris Accord, adopted a green infrastructure ordinance. These types of things move us closer to those examples. And we'll continue, as we go through, in the next few months, the comprehensive needs assessment on our facilities here, to evaluate these options. Mr. McReena and his team has picked the low-hanging fruits. There are some fruits that'll have longer paybacks, but they will have paybacks, and there will be savings that can help us continue to modernize the efficiencies of our facilities as well. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Thank you. The next item is, the mayor's supposed to be making a presentation, he happens not to be here right now, so without objection, I will table this until he gets here. Oh, you're gonna, you're gonna, okay, go ahead. Never mind.
It happens to be a joint resolution, so I think we can do it without him this evening. And again, thank you for the opportunity. Today, we just wanted to present a joint resolution in recognition of the Southfield Neighborhood Revitalization Initiative Workshop coming up this Saturday on June 24th. So, as many may already know, that the city of Southfield, along with the nonprofit housing corp and Habitat for Humanity, has been working to secure foreclosed properties in the city in an effort to revitalize those neighborhoods, get them back on the tax rolls, and get some residents and new homeowners to the city, you know, for the betterment of our city. So we want to kind of showcase that this weekend, and give people an opportunity to see what some of these homes look like, as well as talk to them about ways in which to get their credit reports in line, and be prepared to maybe make a purchase to one of these homes in the future. So, the resolution reads as such. Whereas the Southfield Neighborhood Revitalization Initiative is a partnership between Southfield Nonprofit Housing Corporation, Habitat for Humanity, Oakland County, and the city of Southfield. And whereas, the aim of the initiative is to renew Southfield neighborhoods, house by house, in an effort to improve and maintain property values of all Southfield residents. And whereas, the Neighborhood Revitalization Initiative, in partnership with the Southfield Nonprofit Corporation, Habitat for Humanity of Oakland County, and the city of Southfield, will host, rebuild, renew, revitalize, preserving our community through home ownership, on Saturday, June 24th, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. in the Southfield Parks and Recreation Building. And whereas, this free workshop will give participants information on a variety of topics, including improving their credit score, preparing a budget, understanding the different mortgage options, and the home-buying process. And whereas, a limited number of free credit reports will be provided to participants on a first-come, first-served basis. And whereas, the event will also provide information on homes currently offered for sale through the Southfield Neighborhood Revitalization Initiative, in conjunction with Habitat for Humanity, Oakland County. And whereas, bus tours will be provided at 10:00 a.m. and 1:00 p.m. on the day of the event, to visit some of the homes currently under renovation through the initiative. And whereas, the workshop is free and open to the public, and will include lunch and prize drawings. Now therefore, be it resolved that we, the mayor and city council of the city of Southfield, of Oakland County, state of Michigan, do hereby recognize the work of the Southfield Neighborhood Revitalization Initiative, the Southfield Nonprofit Housing Corporation, and Habitat for Humanity, Oakland County, as they work to improve property values throughout the city of Southfield. Be it further resolved that we, the mayor and city council of the city of Southfield, do hereby encourage residents to attend this free workshop, again, scheduled for this Saturday, June 24th, by responding to the Community Relations Department at area code And hopefully, if you plan to attend, please do so by June 21st. And that concludes the resolution. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. We have two sets of minutes that we need to approve.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move that we approve the minutes, the regular meeting minutes of May 15, 2017, and the regular meeting minutes of May 22, 2017.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Brightwell, supported by Mr. Manalbaum, that we approve the minutes, regular meeting of May 15, 2017, and a regular meeting of May 22, 2017. Is there any discussion? Are we prepared to vote? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is passed. We have several items on our consent agenda this evening. Consent agenda item A is receipt of bids for elevator and escalator maintenance and repair services for the, for the facilities maintenance department, in the tune of $3,052 per month, plus scheduled, for scheduled maintenance, plus hourly rates for repairs. And the bid goes to Cone Incorporated of Livonia. The money is in the facilities maintenance budget for that expense. Item B is the receipt of proposals for tax and water bill lockbox services. And today, we have lockbox services with Alliance Payment Solutions of Detroit, and after review and approval of the, by form of, for the city attorney, this contract will be for a three-year period, beginning July 1, 2017, with the option to extend for two additional one-year periods. And the annual expenditures are estimated to be $2,700 for tax bills, and $13,000 for water bills. Consent agenda item C is approval to purchase online database services and interlibrary loan delivery services through the Midwest Collaborative for Library Services. And the online database services will cost a $6,700, the library, $6,700 annually. The rides delivery service, $4,100 annually, for a total of $10,800, and there is money in their budget for that. The next item, item D, is the approval to purchase online catalog services through the online computer library center. And the cost of the OCLC dialogue, or cataloging service is $10,230.36 annually, with sufficient funds available through the library support services budget. And item E is approval to purchase audiovisual materials for the Southfield Public Library from Midwest Tape. The cost of that is, the total cost of, is $9,000, or $99,000 annually. The funds are provided for the purchase in the 2017-18 library books and tapes account. Item F is approval to purchase database and other services through the library network. And the cost of that is, the requested annual not-to-exceed authorization for these purchases is $17,373, covering the two-year period, July 1, 2017, through June 30, 2019. Consent agenda item G is approval to purchase database through the MetroNet Library Consortium. The request, annual not-to-exceed authorization for these purchases is $35,000 annually for the three-year period, July 1, 2017, through June 30, 2020. Consent agenda item H is approval to purchase desalting ice for the 2017 and 18, and 18, 19 fiscal years. The cost for 2017-18 is $396,830. And for the years, for the fiscal year 2018-19 is $417,830. And funds are provided for this item through streets and highway, and local snow control, repair, and maintenance supplies account. And consent agenda item I is proposed agreement with the city of Lathir Village for continuing provision of fire department and police and fire dispatch services for a two-year period, beginning July 1, 2017. The cost of this is, the police and fire dispatch services for two-year periods beginning 2017, and, for a cost to Lathir Village, of $596,401 for fire department services, and $53,509 for police and fire dispatch services for fiscal year 2018, and $602,365 for fire department services, and $54,044 for police and fire dispatch services for fiscal year 2019. This item was reviewed at the June 5, 2017 Committee of the Whole Meeting. Item J is a liquor license request for YBE Food Group, a duo restaurant and lounge, 2955 Northwestern Highway, Southfield, Michigan. And we had to insert in our package for Friday, it's a transfer of Class C liquor license from SBM Management Incorporated to YBE Food Group LLC, 29,555 Northwestern Highway, Southfield, Michigan. Counsel.
Mr. President.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. Well, I was, I was going to say, I just had a question on I.
Okay.
But it could, if there's a motion, go ahead.
All right. Mr. Chair, I'd like to move that we approve agenda items A through J.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Cruz, supported by Ms. Morris, that we approve agenda, consent agenda items A through J. Mr. Fracassi.
To the administrator, do we, do we do their lockup, or do they still go Beverly? Would that be to our advantage? Would that be to our advantage?
We would have to evaluate, and I can't speak to whether or not it'd be to our advantage to handle their lockup at this time, but we do not do it.
We used to, years ago, and then we, then the last time we had a contract with them, they moved it to Beverly, their lockup. And I was just wondering if there was a financial gain in doing their lockup, since the courts are here on premise. Anyway, it's something to consider.
We could certainly have that conversation with the, our police chief, as well as the receding administrator.
Yeah, okay.
All right. Any other questions? Are we prepared to vote? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is carried. We have one public hearing. Mr. Planer?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, counsel and mayor Cyber. First item with regard to public hearings is PZR 17-0002. It's a rezoning request of Dorch and Martin Associates on behalf of the owner, SLT Holdings LLC, to rezone 2.808 acres of land from RS Regional Shopping and RMU Multiple Family High Rise to B3 General Business, property located 27566 Northwestern Highway. This particular piece of property is the existing New Soul Garden Restaurant, which is just east of Telegraph Road, and just north of Northwestern Highway. This particular piece of property was originally part of a consent judgment, the landmark consent judgment, from a number of years ago. The New Soul Garden was a part of that consent judgment, which also included an office building to the north, what is now the vacant Copper Canyon, and then also the hotel a little bit farther to the east. So all those properties were all part of a consent judgment. The owner of the property wanted to develop the New Soul Garden with additional retail-type uses, but the existing consent judgment did not allow that to happen. So they did go through the process of amending the consent judgment, and this particular piece of property was removed from that consent judgment, so it could stand alone. What ended up happening with that, though, was because the property was RS and RMU, we did have to rezone the property to a commercial-type zoning, in this case, B3, in order to allow for the retail-type development on the property. So again, what they're proposing is, is a B3 general business. In May, the planning commission did recommend favorable for the rezoning, and at that time, we did have a public hearing. We got no responses, nor were there any communications from the public negatively toward the B3 general business and the rezoning. At this time, I do have a short video presentation for you.
Okay.
PZR 17-0002 is a rezoning request of Dorch and Martin Associates, on behalf of the owner, SLT Holdings LLC, to rezone 2.808 acres of land from RS Regional Shopping and RMU Multiple Family High Rise to B3 General Business. The property is located at 27566 Northwestern Highway, on the north side of the Northwestern Highway Service Drive, between Telegraph and Bell Roads, in Section 17 of the city. The properties to the north and east are zoned RMU Multiple Family High Rise. Properties to the south, across Northwestern Highway, are zoned EROM Education Research Office Limited, RC Regional Center, and R2 Single Family Residential. The property to the west is zoned RS Regional Shopping and B3 General Business. Properties to the north and east are developed with an office building and a vacant restaurant, Properties to the south are developed with the BASF building, Mercury Insurance building, and undeveloped land, respectively. The property to the west is developed with a vacant Toys R Us store. The comprehensive master plan indicates regional mixed use for this parcel. The petitioner is proposing to rezone 2.808 acres of land from RS Regional Shopping and RMU Multiple Family High Rise to B3 General Business. The property has 383.27 feet of frontage on Northwestern Highway, with a depth of approximately 453 feet. Issues considered by the planning department during the review of the rezoning were: the Southfield comprehensive master plan indicates regional mixed use for this property, compatibility of new land uses with the abutting existing developments, and the standards for rezoning of property.
That's all staff has at this time. Both the petitioner, Mr. Dorch and Ms. Lazarus, are here to answer any questions.
Okay. If you'd come to the microphone, if you have anything to add to the discussion?
Not at this time. The presentation was very complete, and I forgot, Sam Dorch and Dorch and Martin Associates, 29895 Greenfield, in Southfield. The presentation, again, by the planning department was very complete. I want to mention, I don't think that I heard it, that it's in keeping with the master plan and consistent with adjacent zoning.
This is a public hearing. If anyone would like to speak on PZR 17-0002, please come to the microphone, give your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Pamela Gerald, P.O., Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 4037-0155. My telephone number is 248-346-0439. I just have a couple of questions, and I am in support of, I'm biased, I should say, meaning, I'm in favor of some things, and the other things I have questions about. I think the restaurant is due for a little TLC, to look a little more updated and modern. I'm for that. But my question is, what was the original reason why the consent judgment didn't allow this particular development? And then what was the reason, in terms of specifically, was it that they were not allowed to do in the original consent judgment? And then I wanted to know, clearly, did it state, for Copper Canyon, the hotel, and for Soul Gardens, the consent of judgment? And then the other concern that I have is, by changing it to a B3, what would be allowed in this particular property that's not currently being discussed in the development? For example, Walmart wanted to change to a B3, which would have allowed them to do some other things that the city maybe, and the residents, were not in favor of by switching the rezoning to a B3. So, is it just strictly for this particular thing that we're zoning, or is this zoning the area to B3? And again, what would they be able to install in the future that's not being discussed right now? So those are my concerns, but I think the place is in need of a little TLC. We talk about the standard for the city of Southfield, and it's not just Soul Gardens that needs to update and redo some things, or put new signage out. You know, we have a lot of spiritual edifice along Ten Mile that could use some rehabilitation in terms of their signage. A few of those businesses have fixed their parking lot, which is great, but those are my concerns, and I hope I can get Mr. Dorch, or the lady from Soul Gardens, or one of you esteemed people up here to answer my concerns. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this, this issue, which is PZR 17-0002? Give your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Good evening, a little apprehensive about coming up here. Geraldine Amato, 330647, 1937. I'd like to assert that, under the Uniform Commercial Code, that all our governments are now operational, these type of requests are approved by those in control at the top. But it has little to do with what's in the best interest of all of us at the local level in the long term. We're doing business as usual, according to the master's dictates. The ownership of this property, as has been stated here, is- The ownership of this property, as has been stated here, is really not the person with the title of the property because, under the Uniform Commercial Code, those who hold the wealth of this nation are the international banksters. They control and own everything we have. They give us the illusion of ownership, and we can do what they allow us to do under their code. But if we try to do something different, like move these rezonings in a different direction, which would give us more control on the cultivation and the management of the necessities of our lives, which we are outsourcing continually, as long as we continue to build buildings and business establishment and retail markets, et cetera, retail restaurants, that's suitable to the masterminds and the overlords. Because we are becoming more and more dependent, for our survival, on their gratuities as we forfeit our control on the resources of this nation. We're still in position to control the resources, but as long as we keep playing their games by their rules, we are burying, we are digging a bigger hole that this nation will never be able to recover itself. We're in American dream world. We cannot continue to do business as usual. We must break out of this dream world mentality and realize that we are being controlled and deceived because the things we think we own are not owned by us. We are owned because we are now residents, things identified on this reservation that is owned by the internationalists because we have allowed them to take control of the resources of this nation. They give us permission as their subjects in this commercial colony, this international commercial colony. That's why so much of our business is done overseas now. And the current federal president is an internationalist. He was appointed to be there. He was not elected by the people. Our voting process is totally corrupt and controlled by the same people. And good evening.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on PZR 17-0002? Seeing no one, I will declare the public hearing closed. Counsel? Anyone have anything?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Mandelbaum?
I'd like to move approval of P, sorry, PZR 17-0002 rezoning request.
It's been moved by Mr. Mandelbaum and supported by Mr. Brightwell that we approve PZR 17-0002. Is there any discussion? Before we vote, a question was asked about B3.
Mm-hmm.
What else is, what else could be built there that we aren't talking about tonight?
B3 is kind of our all-encompassing zoning district. It can range anywhere from medical office buildings to banks, photographic studios, funeral homes, retail, of course, veterinary clinics, assembly halls, open-air retail, hotels, obviously restaurants, and so on. So gas stations are also potential. Car washes are also a potential for the B3 General Business District. Typically, you find these types of uses, like on our corners. In this particular area right here, one of the reasons B3 was chosen is because B3 already exists directly to the east and directly to the west of these properties. Again, it allows real flexibility for use, real flexibility for the types of uses and developments. And within that area there along Northwestern Highway, it seemed that that would be a good and feasible zoning district for the proposal that's before you this evening. So it does encompass many different types of uses. And again, within the regional center or the regional area based upon the master plan, those types of uses that I just talked about would fit within the regional use for the master plan.
Okay. Second question is, were only the pieces of property that were owned by the current owner of Soul Gardens changed to B3?
Correct, yep. There were, I believe, four pieces of property that were part of the consent judgment. They had to actually go to each of the property owners who were part of the original consent judgment, which included the homeowners association directly to the northwest, and they all signed off on this one particular property being removed from the consent judgment.
Okay. So the only way anything else could be built is Soul Gardens was torn down, and some couldn't be built in its spot?
On that property only.
On that property, yes, correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay, are we prepared to vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is carried.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to abstain from that vote. I do not have any financial interest in this property, however. I was involved in the consent, original consent judgment. And the reason why it was a consent decree is because the request was for a high-rise building, and the people who are from the residential that are behind it did not want the people looking down upon their backyards.
Okay.
And so the zoning was made so that it would be lower than high-rise.
Okay. All right. Next item was site plan.
Excuse me, I think we need an ordinance, don't we?
Do we need ordinance?
Oh, I'm sorry. That's right.
It's okay. It's okay. Ordinance number 1679.
Okay, I need a motion to introduce 1679?
I'd like to move ordinance number 1679. Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Mandelbaum, supported by Mr. Cruz, that we introduce ordinance number 1679. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is carried.
I abstain.
Okay. Now, site plan.
Yes, thank you. This is PSP 17-0003. This is kind of the piggyback to the rezoning request that counsel just voted on. Again, review request of Dorch and Martin Associates on behalf of the owner, SLT Holdings LLC, for both interior and exterior renovations to the existing New Soul Garden Restaurant, and construction of a standalone 9,016 gross square foot Korean grocery store, property located 27566 Northwestern Highway. Again, with regard to this particular proposal, the owner is, again, looking to renovate the existing building. It's still kind of maintains some of the look of what the older restaurant was on that property, which I believe was the Chi Chi's Restaurant. They are looking, again, to provide for an update to the building, looking for a lot more visibility along Northwestern Highway. So the renovations do include, beyond the exterior changes, also some additional signage and brand-new signage along the frontage with Northwestern. They'll be also providing required bike rack, the pedestrian connections, and upgraded landscape. And if you've seen the parking lot, the parking lot is in dire need of repair as well. So those are all part of the plan. I do have another short video presentation for you, and I'll do that right now.
PSP 17-0003 is a site plan review request of Dorch and Martin Associates on behalf of the owner, SLT Holdings LLC, for renovations to the existing New Soul Gardens Restaurant, and the construction of a new freestanding grocery store. The property is located at 27566 Northwestern Highway, on the north side of the Northwestern Highway Service Drive between Telegraph and Bell Roads in Section 17 of the city. Properties to the north and east are zoned RMU Multiple Family High Rise. Properties to the south across Northwestern Highway are zoned EROM Education Research Office Limited, RC Regional Center, and R2 Single Family Residential. The property to the west is zoned RS Regional Shopping and B3 General Business. With regard to the existing land uses, the subject property is currently developed with the New Soul Gardens Restaurant and parking lot. To the north is a parking lot with an office building beyond. To the south is the north elevation of the existing New Soul Gardens Restaurant. To the east is a wooded area, and to the west is the parking lot for the vacant Toys R Us building. The site contains 2.808 acres of land with 383.27 feet of frontage on Northwestern Highway and a depth of approximately 453 feet. The proposed site plan indicates interior and exterior renovations to the existing New Soul Gardens Restaurant, and future construction of a standalone 9,016 gross square foot Korean grocery store. Issues considered by the planning department during the review of the site plan were: the site plan standards of Article 18 B3 General Business; the proposals in accordance with the Southfield Comprehensive Master Plan noting regional mixed use for this parcel; and the petitioner is to implement the recommendations made by the Southfield Police Department's Crime Prevention Bureau regarding site security.
The planning commission in May did make a favorable recommendation on this proposed site plan. I do know that Mr. Dorch and does have elevations of the building. They were not part of the video, but he does elevations to show you this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sam Dorch and Dorch and Martin Associates, 29895 Greenfield in Southfield. In your packet, you all received smaller color pages of what I will show you. And I'll try to be able to be heard. You all have the color site plan. This is the existing restaurant, and this is the proposed grocery store and Asian specialty food store is what the owner is proposing. The, all vestiges of the Chi Chi's facade will be removed, and what we are proposing... And first, I'll cover the restaurant. This is the new entrance, where previously there was an Asian kind of pagoda look at the entry. The entire sloping surface will be removed. Behind it is a masonry wall, and this is all new finishes. The style is reminiscent of a South Korean symbol type of architectural feature. That's the lines, the vertical lines with the horizontal above and below. And we feel very proud of this particular look. Staying with the restaurant, you have another color board that shows what's being proposed on the inside. This is the entry. It's, the existing plan, the existing footprint stays the same except for the sloping walls on the outside. The angled entry is still in the same place. A mall-type hallway or hostess lobby area is proposed because we have four different venues. We have a bar near the entry for those waiting, a sushi area. We're proposing patio area outside of that. We have a bakery with a new patio area proposed on the outside. Those, both patio areas are on the site plan, and a Korean barbecue. The existing kitchen will be upgraded as needed. Upside down. The next board is the specialty grocery store, food market. I've been treated to a few tours of some others, to a Chinese specialty grocery store, a Korean, and a Japanese. And it's interesting how different the goods are in each one. They all relate to their country of origin. This is in, the owner is proposing this in order to draw people into the area. North Korean, not North Korea, it's been in the news way too much. South Korea.
Whoa.
Or anyone from Korea. And there are specialty foods particularly to that ethnic situation. So if you have any questions, be happy to answer them.
Counsel, are there any questions?
One question, if I may.
Go ahead. Mr. Mandelbaum?
Will this fall under the need for art on the premises?
Oh, it could. We do allow for architectural embellishments on buildings to go toward the art requirement. Because of the amount of money that is being spent on development here, they, as far as I know, they will qualify or need to provide art on the property. But yes, these types of architectural embellishments can be looked at as part of the art requirement and meet that, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Brightwell?
I'm not getting into any of your marketing secrets, but is there a demonstrated market for these services in all these entities?
I don't have anything to support it, no, nor do I have anything to argue against that. All I can tell you is, in my experience, being a property owner in Southfield, I own an office building that my practice is in, a recent new tenant is doing business with South Korea. He has a factory in Korea, in South Korea. And my understanding from talking with him and other people, because of the automotive industry in this area, there are two dealerships of Korean manufactured cars, just the, well, not adjacent. Glassman has a Kia and a Hyundai, and now the Genesis, a new brand. There is more and more influx of people with interest in the South Korean manufacturing and auto industry. I would like to hold this up. I have it. You can't see it too well because it's kind of small, but it is a rendering, and I could bring it if you'd like to see it a little better. Can I bring it up to you?
Sure. This is what it's going to look like?
Right, this is a rendering of perspective taken at about the level of the...
You're speaking with the counsel.
Pardon?
Yeah. One question. One question. Is this ADA compliant?
Yes.
The reason I ask that is since my wife has been handicapped, going into buildings, especially restaurants, there's always handicap parking, but when you get to the door, you're on your own. They don't have the push-button doors that open automatically so I can get her wheelchair in. And I'm opening the door and struggling to hold the door open and move her wheelchair around so that I can get her in the doorway. So will this have automatic doors in it?
That's something I can't answer. If they are required for handicap requirements or if the owner wants to have them, they will be in. I'll mention your concern to him.
Mr. Zorn, you've been going through this for our facilities here. Are automatic doors required as far as handicap capable? Pardon me?
I don't believe this site is based on the amount of renovation work they're doing, but the building department will maybe be the ultimate determination of whether or not that code is being met. But off the cuff, what we've done in our own buildings here, I don't believe it's going to be required.
We'll definitely be fully compliant with...
Okay. They might be rolling out some potential clients.
I don't disagree. I've been quite involved in the study of the handicap laws since they went into effect 40 years ago. And, you know, we will definitely keep that in mind and mention it to the owner. I don't disagree that, you know, that they should be there. Some of the things that we are doing in compliance or for convenience of whether it's people who are handicapped or in certain situations, and that I...we will have...the handicap parking is where it should be very adjacent to the entryways. All of the facilities on the interior of the building, the toilet facilities will be upgraded to meet the handicap codes. All the openings will be of sufficient width to handle whether it's wheelchairs or people with walkers. All the obstructions will be removed for easy access. There will be someone at the door. It's my understanding and it's on the floor plan, there is someone stationed at the door that could easily help the handicap for access.
All right. It just seems like an appropriate time to do that as long as you're doing quite a bit of remodeling to the building.
Yes. And I would like to point out, in addition to the handicap requirements, the city instituted a new parking requirements which we took notice of and redid all of the parking lot striping and added a substantial percentage of green space to the site because of what was made available by the new parking standards.
Okay. All right. Are there any other questions? Any in motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve Site Plan Number PSP 17-0003.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Brightwell, supported by Mr. Cruz, that we approve PSP 17-0003. Are we prepared to vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is carried. And let the record show that there is one abstention.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to just make a comment. It has nothing to do with this project, but there have been more than a few sites come before council as a whole as opposed to coming through the Site Plan Committee. And I don't know why that's happening, but a lawyer just was asking me when we have a meeting, and we haven't had a meeting in quite some time. And I think that some of these things ought to be reviewed to see whether or not what the committee is doing, either that or do away with the committee, one or the other. And the other thing is that on site plan, you know, I ran into a situation where the Shell gas station in Evergreen and 12 Mile Road, they had the...and I think Jeff knows about it. They had the handicap back by the garbage. And where the ramp is, right by the door...
Oh, boy.
He wanted to put the handicap parking, but it was not in accordance with the site plan. So anyways, so there is that thing. So I don't know how we can change that site plan to put the parking by the door and by where the ramp is.
Nearly there.
And I don't know how Jeff...I don't know how we do that.
Yeah, I don't know if it's an issue where code enforcement can cite them for...the handicap parking space is supposed to be closest to the door to the building. And because if it was part of an approved site plan that showed it there prior and it was approved that way, I don't know if we have any authority whatsoever to go back to them and say, "Well, now you have to change it based upon current law." We can look at it. We can certainly talk with our city attorney about it and see if there's any things that we can do.
Yeah, because now the cars park right in front of the ramp and right by the door.
Right.
And if that's handicapped and, you know, going through some operations, you know, and having a handicap sticker, you know, I have to park back by the garbage can and walk in a pavement, you know, and then to the ramp. If the car is by the ramp, I can't go up the ramp. So it's something that has to be kind of worked out with the planning department and council.
Yeah, for sure. We can take a look at the options and report back to you.
Okay.
If I might mention, the handicap laws came into effect before the striping in the parking lots was done. So any of the striping of the parking lots should have been done in accordance with the laws and the codes. And I have seen a Southfield vehicle, a city vehicle, that is the parking enforcement people. I've never seen them in my parking lot. I've had my parking lot redone twice now to make sure that my handicap requirements are met. And I think that whoever that person is could get around to many more places than mine.
And if I may follow up, whenever someone does come in with a change to an existing site plan in a site, we definitely make them revise their barrier-free to meet the current, if it does not right now. So if this particular gas station was to come in for a change of some one way, shape, or form, we would definitely make sure that they complied with the barrier-free requirements and get those spaces closest to the door.
Yeah, but what I heard was that he would have to come and get an architect and do a new site plan.
He would have to, yeah. Administratively, yeah, we would do that administratively.
Cost him money to make something work that isn't working, you know?
I volunteer for that. Thank you.
Is there anything else relates to this last site plan here? If not, we'll move on to communications. Our first request for recognition is Ms. Pamela Gerald. Would you please come forward and give your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Good evening to the residents in the audience and to the residents that are viewing this council meeting. I've been your independent voice for quite a number of years, so I want to just get to the point. I want to ask a question. Who was the, I'm going to just say stupid mastermind to come behind an idea of appointing a clerk and appointing a treasurer during the year that we're going to have an election? Dan, you might not understand, but in 1999, there was a charter committee. I was privy to be appointed to that charter committee by, at the time, the longest-serving councilperson. We went through the charter and that was never an issue that came up, that the city clerk and the treasurer should be appointed positions. We need checks and balances in this city and the only way we can have checks and balances independent from administration is by having an elected clerk and an elected treasurer. I'm going to say to the residents in the audience and watching this meeting, any one of these four people that's up for reelection, including your mayor, if they support this initiative, you vote them out. One or two of them may be running unopposed, so that might be difficult to do, but I know that you're going to do the right thing, voters, and I know that you're going to stand with me on this. The reason why, you guys, the ones that are masterminding this, it's personal. You've got two people that don't really care for the treasurer or don't like what the treasurer is doing. I hear your pock shots. Mr. Zorn, when you're in these finance meetings and COWs where you're talking about, "We don't really need a treasurer. We can source it out when we need financial advice." Well, we can source out the city attorney. Farmington Hills only calls the city attorney when they need one. We can also source out your position. We don't need a mayor. We don't need a city council. The organizational chart says that we, the residents, are at the top. So maybe we can make all the decisions since you guys have such a hard time and you're making this very political. We're going to do what the charter says, that is to elect a clerk, to elect a treasurer, and anybody up there that is not in agreement with that, then you don't need to be on this city council. Don't try to change it because she's retiring. The young lady that is a candidate for city clerk, Ms. Sharika Hawkins, she's educated, she has all of the clerk certifications, and she's a sitting clerk in another city. We've got one of the best treasurers in the United States and you guys have touted about that. So don't try to take away our democratic process by changing this. Bring this to the people and see if they want it, not by a charter committee. Do a town hall like Ms. Morrison did about the roads.
The next person is Mr. Gerard Mullin. Give your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Gerard Mullin, Southfield Citizens Oversight Committee, Post Office Box 155, Southfield, Michigan 48037. Mr. Chairman, earlier this evening, this council held a review for a site plan regarding a Korean grocery store that was advertised in the June 1st issue of the Southfield Sun, the one newspaper that every Southfield resident gets a copy of for free. This advertised notice was totally unnecessary. Why? Well, because there's no legal nor logical reason for this notice to be published in the first place. And no other city in Michigan publishes such a notice. Not Farmington Hills, not Redford, not Detroit, not Oak Park, none zilch, nada, nada one. And to top it off, it costs the Southfield taxpayers big bucks. How much? Well, over the last five years, tens and tens of thousands of dollars. Your dollars, my dollars, our dollars. Publishing these useless notices is just another example of an out-of-control, spin-thrift council. No surprise here, is there? After all, this council here tonight is the very same council that recently gave one of its favorite city employees a $30,000 bonus atop a $30,000 a year raise. Yes, you heard me right, a $30,000 a year raise. Even this is small potatoes when compared to the millions and millions of wasted dollars given away each year by this council in the form of tax abatements to council's favorite corporate friends like the corporate criminal Denzel, a convicted felon convicted in January 2012 by Uncle Sam for bid rigging and price fixing. And then nine months later, on October 22nd, 2012, Denzel, a known felon, was rewarded with a tax abatement by this council. Your council, my council, our council. Our council needs to be changed. We can get that changed this November, November 7th. Thank you.
The next person that asked for communication space is Ms. Geraldine Amato. If you'd come to the microphone, give your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Public comment, Geraldine Amato. Just as the Masonic ritual murders of a few federal presidents who challenged the money power, what Abe Lincoln called the money power at their time, ushered in an era of federal presidents who never oppose the central bank. I've noted in New Mexico and the last several months since I've been here, the ritual murders of sheriff and police officers, Colin Rose down in Wayne State since I've noticed the last few months. I believe that is for the purpose of ushering in yes-men in an authoritarian regime. Professional warriors now in the Pentagon-controlled military establishment are preferred to be yes-men. Not free thinkers or those who value liberty, but those who value their power as ordained officers, warriors, to do whatever violence they are ordered to do against others. In the military, we have accounts of friendly fire incidents of military units and individuals. And if we note some of the code written in the announcements of some of them that they actually publish, you can see the signature of the Mason Brotherhood. So I believe they're getting rid of military units and individuals who dare to buck unlawful orders under superior command. They want blind compliance. We heard about Interpol also, the international police, under this international bankster cartel that controls this nation's wealth and power. They also want our police officers under their control. We're going from NPR to PRI, Public Radio International. We have the worldwide web and international net as a trap. Nets and webs catch things. This going, computerizing practically everything and processing everything under that worldwide web is setting us up for disaster in the future. When the 9/11 event happened, the Pentagon building was, they claim, hit by an airplane. But if you noted, it was the new wing of that building that was hit. And I believe that probably there were political dissidents from the Pentagon who were gotten rid of that day. When they rebuilt that wing, they announced in the Albuquerque Journal, front headline, they would call the rebuilding project "Phoenix Rising." That's another occultic symbol. The people who control this nation are not good people. And we need to...
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
...turn their authority. You don't have to be so quick about turning the microphone on.
Thank you.
Except through all your stuff, who's holding it?
Thank you.
And it's not enlightening.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're thank you too.
I was...I understand there are some people in the audience from...they live on Mulberry that wish to be recognized. If you'd come to the microphone, give your name and address for the record, you have three minutes.
Yes, my name is Roger Dingman. I live at 32452...
I live at 32452 Mulberry Court. And I'm here because of the redesign of our road. I feel that it's put us at a disadvantage, a safety issue. I attended the meeting, I can't remember if it was November, December, when this project was discussed. We was told at that time that everything would be put back exactly the way it was. At that time, our road, being that it is a private drive, was not gonna be tore up. They was going to push something through the pipe to burst it and pull new line through, and the only thing that we would have was small areas dug up to attach us to the main. I have a thing that was sent out from the township that anytime we had questions to call and contact Wade and Trim. I've called him several times and got some answers. We needed some areas filled in for a driveway so we could get into it to park. And up until probably three weeks ago, the end of the street, there used to be a little island. It was like around about here. And I called the number Wade and Trim and asked the lady why she redesigned our road. She told me she didn't know what I was talking about, that that should be a temporary issue. I said, "Okay, that's what we thought." They was using that area to store their equipment, dirt, gravel, other equipment. I asked her at that time, if that's just a temporary issue, and it's going back the way it is, why did you extend the driveways all the way out through the area that was that little roundabout? Why, then, has the other people's property where the road used to run, why was that filled in with dirt and hydro seeded? That does not look like a temporary situation. She called and sent an engineer that was doing the project out to my house. I asked him, "What's with the end of the road? Why is it like that?" He went in the truck and he comes back with a different set of blueprints. He said, "The engineer, Lee Schultz, redesigned it." That redesign was done in March, I believe, the middle of March. Not one person on the street was ever contacted. We had no input, and I don't know, that's just, that's wrong. It's really infecting our way of life. This is a small, private drive. It is like 12 feet wide. There's no way for any two cars to pass each other. The only place we had, where two vehicles to get by one another, was at the end of the road, where we used to be able to come down the road and either go left or right. That was the only place that if someone's coming down the road, that we could back up and other vehicle can get by. That is no longer there. The only way we would have now is to back out into Mulberry Drive, which, I've tried that just the other day, backing off of Mulberry Court onto Mulberry Drive. It's very difficult to see what is coming down that road, let alone any truck. I'm in a car. I would invite any one of you people on this council to please come down to our road and see what we have. Why somebody sitting in an engineering department can sit there and redesign a road that has worked well for over 70 years, all of a sudden she has a better idea? And from what I understand, she don't even live in the city. I've called and talked to the mayor. The mayor, it seems like he somewhat agreed with us, but when he called me back, he says he has no authority over the engineering department. Another thing that I would wanna know is what are the legal ramifications? You've taken one lady that lived on Mulberry Drive, you moved her to Mulberry Court. You've also changed all the property down on the end of the street. Who's going to pay for the zoning, or, you know, the legal description of the property? The road is no longer there the way it was. Now, we really appreciate our road being repaved, we love that part of it, but you have really affected our lives. There is seven people of us here, and that's over three-quarters of the people that live on the street. One lady unfortunately can't come here, she's over 100 years old and she's in poor health, but she has lived there for over 70 years. I've talked to everyone that's come down the street, from the garbage truck driver, he said it is now an absolute nightmare trying to get around that corner and down our street. Another gentleman that lives here right on the end, there's no way that truck can get in there without either running over his lawn or knocking over the 100-year-old lady's mailbox. Please, come down there and see what they have done. We would've, I would've been here with the blueprints of this, but I was told we needed to FOIA them, they could not give me a cost, and this has just happened in the last three weeks. I would like this to be taken care of while the roads are still being paved. Please, come down there and see for yourself what you are putting us through.
I have a question. Mulberry runs off Civic Center Drive on one end. Where are you in relationship to Civic Center Drive?
We are off of 10 Mile.
You're off 10 Mile?
10 Mile, yes.
Okay.
Between Berg and Lasher.
Okay.
Now, our road is, you know, about halfway down the street.
Okay.
And like I said, it was a private drive, you know, the city has never done anything for us down there. We have maintained that road for 70 years.
Well, as a private drive...
Pardon?
As a private drive, that is your responsibility.
Mulberry Court. Pardon?
As a private drive, that is your responsibility.
Mulberry Court is a private road.
Yeah, that is your responsibility. It's not a city responsibility.
All right, but now they've added to what we are responsible for, when they took the island out.
Okay.
And like I said, they done moved one lady from Mulberry Drive to Mulberry Court legally.
Okay, we'll have someone, we'll have someone, we'll have someone come out and take a look at it and see how we can resolve the issue.
Okay, will you, can I meet with someone later? I'll give you my phone number and stuff.
Sure, our city clerk, our city clerk right over there. You can leave your name, address, and phone number.
We have seven more people from the street. Can they say something?
I think you've pretty well identified what the problem is.
I said, "I'm kind of unprepared," you know? Like I said, this just caught us all by surprise.
Well, I think you've...
Every one of us that we talked to, you know, was absolutely assured that that was going to go back exactly the way it was.
Okay.
So this just, you know, like I said, had no idea that this road had been totally redesigned.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. Don't forget to leave your name and address with the city clerk right over there.
Okay.
Is he the contact person?
I mean, I don't know.
Who's the contact?
Are you gonna be, are you gonna be the person that we should contact?
I, I don't feel, you know, that... I, you know, some of the other...
I'm running the meeting, Ms. Gerald. I'm, I'm running the meeting. Thank you. Thank you.
I mean, I don't, I'm not appointing myself to speak for everyone on the street.
But we, but you've identified the problem. That's good enough that we can at least get started, figure out where we go from here.
Okay.
All right?
Under, you know, why can the engineering department just do something like that without any notice?
Well, we're gonna dig into it and find out. We'll dig into it and find out what happened.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Lori Jo Anderson, and I reside at 24321 Mulberry Court in Southfield, 48033. And I just wanted to thank you, esteemed gentlemen and ladies, for giving me the chance to speak on the subject of the changes made to Mulberry Drive and Mulberry Court. I really do urge you with what Mr. Dingman said, to just take that short drive just south of 10 Mile and see what's happened to the area where we get in and out of the street, which is the public access.
Okay.
And it's, there's a curve that goes into it, and it's very unsafe now, even in good weather.
Okay.
And I just, it's not too late to fix this before something really tragic happens. And you look at it and you go, "Uh-oh."
Okay.
It's gonna happen.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is council, and we have some expense reports to approve.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Support.
Both, both the expense reports, as soon as I can find them here.
Let's take them one at a time.
Okay.
It's been...
Michael Mantlebaum.
It's been moved by Mr. Fugazi, supported by Mr. Cruz, that we approve the expense report for Mr. Mantlebaum for the one-year anniversary of Royal Oak, Michigan.
Yes.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is carried?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move Mr. Mantlebaum's Eight Mile Road Boulevard Leadership Luncheon Report.
Support.
Has been moved by Mr. Fugazi, supported by Mr. Cruz, that we approve Mr. Mantlebaum's expense report for the Eight Mile Road Boulevard Leadership Luncheon. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is carried. Let the record show that Mr. Mantlebaum abstained on both of the votes. Mr. Mayor. Oh, first of all, does anyone else have anything else in, on council?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd just like to make a comment. You know, sitting up here and hearing, you know, I guess, you know, it's a democracy and you have to listen to complaints, but I wish somebody do some research, and a little bit about the city and all the good things that we're doing each and every day, what the employees are doing each and every day, and the administration is doing each and every day. I mean, there's, there's situations here that they deal with that, that are just done instantaneously and not making a big thing. You look at that sinkhole we had on Franklin House, it just went on like business as usual, and it was a main sinkhole. It was a dangerous situation, a very expensive thing to deal with, you know, and we just seem to do things automatically.
Right.
And it really, you know, wish, you know, you talk about the road thing, you know, I mean, I think that was done so, so great, all the people who participated, the residents were happy with it, that were there. And it was very informative. And I think there's so many things that we're doing, you know, with fire, police, snow, cutting grass, I mean, everything that these guys are doing, and they don't have the staff that you used to have, and they're still getting the job done. And I'm not, you know, picking on the people who come up here and speak their piece, because they sure, and I'll sit here all day long and listen to them, but I hope they understand what's going on in this city and how we're dealing with situations. And I am very proud of staff and how we deal with things and the way the city's run, and how advanced we are in almost every department. So I just wanted to make that comment, Mr. President.
Okay, and it's well taken. Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Braywell.
I too want to make a comment, not share these comments with the city administrator. Based on the town hall on roads, I thought our staff did an exceptional job in being very thorough and answering every question that came up that was within their area of expertise. In essence, I was impressed with the thoroughness of it and the competence of Ms. Schultz, Mr. Cerros, and Mr. Zorn, and they were extremely experts in their, in their knowledge. And, Mr. Chair, I want to make a comment with respect to my comments earlier, which were alluded to. When I made comments earlier tonight, my comments were based on my accounting background and financial background. Every situation has to need a check and checks and balances, and that's my comments to the general public. My background is in finance and accounting, and whenever there's movement of money and or responsibility, there has to be a check and balance, and that's my comments in, that were in our planning session, nothing else other than that.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Morrison.
I too would like to comment on the town hall on the roads. I agree with everyone here that it was a well-attended event, there were a lot of good questions asked by the residents, a lot of good answers provided by our staff. If you didn't get an opportunity to attend the town hall, they will be showing it on cable TV, so just be on the lookout for that. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Mantlebaum.
I just wanted to remind everyone that this coming Wednesday, and next week Wednesday, Parks and Rec has two fantastic events. This week Wednesday, it's from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. It's on the front lawn, it's free, kind of a first-day-of-summer event. And then also next week is a, from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m., again in the front lawn, another free event, Family Fun and Safety Night. There will be a movie that evening as it gets darker. It should be a great, a great event, and hopefully you can come out and bring your families. Community Pride Awards are due to the city the end of June, so feel free to nominate your neighbors, businesses, me, whoever you would like, in order to win a Community Pride Award. I know that the judges walk around and do, and look at every home that is, and business, place of worship that is submitted for nomination. The city has a very unique relationship with Almost Home Animal Shelter, and there's currently a contest going on where they are eligible to win $5,000 as a grant to help with their, with their rescue of animals and other things. It's being run now through June 29th through Independent Bank. You do need Facebook to vote in order to, that's how they're keeping everyone honest, but you can vote one time per day. If you go to independentbank.com, there's a link to their voting, and you can vote for Almost Home Animal Shelter. The top four vote-getters from now through June 29th will receive $5,000 in an investing communities grant. So hopefully everyone can take advantage of that. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? And now, Mr. Mayor.
First, I'd like to comment that I did work with the residents on Mulberry Court. I did go out there. It is a one-lane road, and there was a turn area where someone could pass one another, and that is gone. It's also, it's not a straight shot, the road bends, it's heavily wooded, and you can't see from one end of the Mulberry Court to the other. Though I would just urge that this turnaround or place where people could pass that was there gets restored. On a bright note, this Sunday, the 25th, is the 11th Annual Garden Walk, 2:00 to 5:00. Tickets are $10. You can buy them at the event, or they are on sale at the reception desk in the lobby. And the neighborhood is San Marino. Every year, it's a different neighborhood as we work on curb appeal and to promote our neighborhoods, the diversity of neighborhoods that we have in the city. The walk begins at the Fountain Park Office Plaza on the corner of 12 Mile and Inkster, and you enter on Inkster Road. There'll be a shuttle bus, you can park there, and then a shuttle bus will take you through the neighborhood and drop you off. It's a continuous loop, so it'll drop you off at one of five stops, get off the bus, get on, back on the bus. get on, back on the bus. And we're appreciative of Durham School Services who have donated the bus and the drivers as a donation to the city. Again, Sunday, the 25th, 2:00 to 5:00 p.m., San Marino Neighborhood, 12 Mile and Inkster. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you, sir. Administration?
I have no items this evening.
Thank you. Madam Attorney?
Yes, I have the one item that we discussed earlier at the study session, which involves the potential lease extension agreements with Detroit S M S A regarding the cell towers at Fire Stations Number Two and Three. As I indicated in the study session, the terms would be renegotiated for these extensions, and they would commence on, in June of 2019. And there would be four, five-year extensions. Do you want me to go through the financial pieces again, or?
Just as a reminder for some of the people in the audience being out, and the people watching would not have heard it at all.
Okay, so, so the, the proposals for the extensions would be a $50,000 upfront payment to the city per site. With respect to the Fire Station Number Two at, at Nine and Beach, the annual rent will increase to $36,000 a year. And with respect to Fire Station Number Three at 20135 West 12 Mile, the rent will be $30,000 per year. Both of the sites will also have an escalator of 3% annually during the term, so the rent will increase 3% every year. And if new carriers are added to those towers, they, the city will share 35% of the rental income derived as a result of those carriers going on the tower.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Mr. Cruz?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the lease agreement and extension with Detroit S M S A Tower Holdings.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Cruz, supported by Ms. Morris, that we approve the lease agreement for extension for the Detroit S M S A Tower Holdings. Is there any discussion? Are we prepared to vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is carried. Clerk?
Thank you. The next item before you is a request to amend our council meeting schedule to add a meeting next Monday at 6:00 p.m. to discuss various items that need to be brought forward to council. They include next core, N R I homes, a budget adjustment, human resources recommendation, reporting of emergency purchases, election equipment update, and any other items deemed necessary. It is recommended that your honorable body consider scheduling a meeting for next Monday, 6:00 p.m. in the council study.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Ficassi and supported by Mr. Brightwell that we amend our council meeting schedule to include a meeting for Monday, June 26, 2017, at 6:00 p.m. in the council study room. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is carried. Would you make sure that this gets posted and advertised so that people that want to attend will, can be here? Thank you.
Absolutely. And also, I'd like to add one more item, please. A few weeks ago, Councilman Mandelbaum talked about, like, educating the public on, like, a 101, different things that we do in the city. And I just recently had a request come through, and sometimes, you know, we, we do things on a daily basis and take things for granted, but I just want to remind the public that all of the agendas and supporting materials are all online, and if anyone is interested in following what council is voting on, if they go to our website, www.cityofsouthfield.com, click on the clerks portion, and on the left-hand side you'll see agendas. If you click on the agendas and then the date of the meeting, the actual item will appear in all the supporting material that council is approving. All the information is uploaded every Friday at, at least by 4:00 p.m. and is available for the public to view. And I thought, you know, again, maybe everyone isn't aware of that, so I just wanted to remind the public. And if you have any problems trying to find the area, just please call the clerk's office, and we'll be more than happy to walk you through the process. Also, this room and the room, the council study, is equipped with Wi-Fi, so if you do bring your iPad with you, you will be able to log right into the meeting, so when council example goes through the consent items, you'll see everything right in front of you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Also, and make sure that you update the calendar, our meeting calendar, that's on the web, so that they'll know that next Monday is going to be another meeting. We have nothing to schedule. We do have some ordinances.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Mandelbaum?
I'd like to move that we enact ordinance number 1678.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Mandelbaum, supported by Ms. Morris, that we enact ordinance number 1678. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is carried. Is there anything else that comes before the, you need?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Mandelbaum?
Um...
I am surprised.
If it's possible, I'd like to recognize Ms. Lenny Taylor, she wanted to make some remarks to council.
Sure. Should have done that back at the council.
This was a new, a brand-new request.
Good evening.
If you give your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Thank you, first of all. My name is Lenny Taylor. I live at 29221 Somerset Drive, Southfield, Michigan, 48076. Thank you for hearing me, and thank you, Councilman Mandelbaum. I was getting ready to say Ari. I'm here today because after hearing everybody tonight, I was really surprised that I did not hear about a contractor, a subcontractor that is doing business in the city of Southfield, where his automobile is, has a Confederate flag on it. And the reason that I was surprised that we, that I didn't hear about it is because once the city was notified, and then our mayor was notified, Ari Mandelbaum and several other people on council, our city administrator, Lee Schultz, our city engineer, once everybody heard this, they immediately responded. So I'm, I'm here to, to say that we should show more transparency, let the residents know that you are responding when we call, and that you do something about it. My understanding from talking with our city administrator, that from our mayor all the way over to Lee Schultz have, went to this contractor and the subcontractor, and are now asking for this employee to be removed from doing work in the city of Southfield, showing respect. Southfield is a diverse city that embraces the American ideal of diversity everywhere, where we work together, play together, we come together, and we respect each other's culture and their beliefs. The Confederate flag is a symbol of ignorance, bigotry, and slavery, and it has no place in the city of Southfield. So I want to say thank you for each person that took the time to respond to not only me, but any other resident that called you, and we called several times. And then, we should know the responses that you're giving us. When we call, we would like to know that you are answering us, that you are hearing what we have to say. So I'm standing here saying thank you, thank you, and thank you again for hearing us and for not allowing such display of Confederate flags or other, I don't even know the words to say, allow those to happen here in the city of Southfield because we are so diverse and because we respect one another. So I just wanted to say thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Thank you.
I'd like to comment further on that. This first came to light on a Facebook page six weeks ago. When it was brought to my attention, a number of residents, I probably logged eight, 10 calls regarding this, and we responded by contacting Dan's Excavating, which is doing the Evergreen Road Project. I had asked at that time that this employee be, I understand First Amendment rights, but this is terribly insensitive, and it is offensive to our residents, and I asked that this employee be sent on another, to another community, and their answer was to cover the license plate. So for some time, the license plate was covered. On Friday, we got another message that the plate was back visible. Today, I again contacted Dan's Excavating and the consulting engineer, O H M, and again asked for, for them to do something. The, I'm disappointed in the response from Dan's Excavating, in that they took it rather lightheartedly, I'll, I'll put it that way. And obviously, not only is it insulting to our community, but our residents are paying for this road project. It is their road dollars that are, are paying for this project. So I'm waiting for another reply from either Dan's Excavating or O H M regarding this. I, I would also say that it was reported to me today by a resident, I did not see this, that other offensive things were posted on this truck, as if they're, the driver or the worker is thumbing his nose at all of us. It's not tolerable. And I don't know what else. I hope that tomorrow we get a, an appropriate response from Dan's Excavating.
The more, the more it changes, the more it stays the same. Is there anything else to come before us this evening?
Mr. President, to this topic...
Yeah, Mr. Zorn.
The administration will continue to work for resolution. It is not acceptable. To Dan's Excavating, there's more to getting these jobs than just the little bit, and as the mayor says, these are taxpayer dollars, and we were less than satisfied with their response. I'll also remind council, these are federal and state-awarded contracts, and we'll be turning the heat up there as well.
Very good. Anything else? Seeing nothing more, the meeting's adjourned.